City of Twalton work session. The semi decent day out there right now. They'll change in 10 minutes. But tonight we have a couple items on the agenda, then we have our review later tonight for our full council meeting. So tonight we'll start off with the stormwater master plan, Basalt Creek. Is that Kim?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and counselors. We're back here talking about stormwater. Couple of weeks ago. We had this before you and we heard your concerns about getting Basalt Creek added to the stormwater master plan. In addition, the southwest concept area was not included in the master plan, so we're going to add that as well. And I have a map to share. We'll see how good that goes. So this just gives you an idea of the two areas we're looking at. So the light blue is Basalt Creek. And the dark blue is the southwest concept plan area. So what we would hope to do in this effort is to partner with Clean Water Services, Washington County. And Wilsonville to study the stormwater needs of the area. We'd hire a consultant to work with us. One of the first things they would do is send staff out to do some. Field assessments like stream assessment, looking at steep slopes and soils. And maybe deficiencies in infrastructure, which I have to say, there's not a whole lot of infrastructure there. However, we're going to be looking for all of it. And then we would work with Clean Water Services. They're opening up the the whole county, looking at sub basin planning that hasn't been done. Basalt Creek is one of the areas. And so that would help determine if there's any specialized stormwater management approaches needed in this area. Then in the master plan for Basalt Creek and Southwest Concept Plan. We had hoped to create some maps that would show the drainage areas, the steep slopes, the soils. Those kinds of things that you can give to developers to help inform. You know, the setbacks and protections of the natural resources that will be necessary. We'd also coordinate with Clean Water Services and I hope we would generate a map that would. Be infrastructure and facilities that. We could put together showing where stream enhancement, conveyance. Being the pipes, the detention and the water quality facilities might be located. And those are, you know, in general, they could be located in these areas and then. That could change somewhat, but it would help to start informing those discussions that we would have with developers. So this approach that was outlined in the memo that you received. Is to add the Basalt Creek and Southwest Concept Planning Areas to the master plan that was before you two weeks ago. That work is good work. It generated a great list of projects, 21 projects over. The next 10 years or more, depending on funding, but it will keep us busy. And then we'll add to it what's necessary for Basalt Creek and Southwest Concept Plan. And then for development, they would continue. Applying the current standards that Clean Water Services have in place, so. It wouldn't hold up development at this point. They would continue using those standards. So if that approach sounds like it's the direction we should go, we can get to get, you know, get busy right away. Putting together a scope and fee and getting to work on doing this additional planning for those two areas. And are there any questions?
Questions for Kim? Counselor Hillier.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kim. I just wanted to confirm that this is separate than the transportation. This is going to be just for. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, stormwater.
Other questions? Counselor Brooks.
I have a question around the development and the stormwater management in the meantime before we have a plan. I don't know what the capacity is there currently and. And how that's mitigated. Can you just walk us through it a little bit?
Are you talking about the applications that we've been looking at for development on the east side?
I'm talking about the for the housing and the. Rest of it, they'll have more hard surfaces and more need for. Stormwater management and how without a plan, we're mitigating that in the meantime.
Right, so they would use the Clean Water Services standards that says everything on their site needs to be collected, all the runoff from their site. Whether it's from the impervious roofs and roadways and driveways. And they'll be conveyed in public sewer, storm sewer pipes within the public streets. And directed to a larger public water quality and detention pond. That's where we'll hold the volume of stormwater and release it over 48 hours or more. Through a little orifice, which typically they run about an inch and a half, so it's a trickle off of the site compared to. Just letting things go. So this what the detention pond does. And those regulations are already in place.
Thank you very much.
Other questions for Kim? Counselor Pratt.
I'm wondering, so this master plan, I'm assuming it will encompass what is known will be developed there, which right now is. Pretty much just that housing development. So do you just do general things for you where you'll know it'll be industrial, not knowing? I guess the design of each parcel of land, what will happen on each one and how. I guess I'm just a little confused as to what your master plan is based on for the areas that aren't developed, but. We just have a general idea of what the use will be.
Right, but that use is based on the zoning, so we can make some assumptions. On minimum lot coverage for hard surfaces to maximum lot coverage. And determine what kind of runoff volumes we'll see from those sites. So we can do that. And that's where I think that some of the maps that we'd like to bring back. Might show where the ponds would go. And possibly even what size. And of course, if people combine properties, then that would change somewhat, but. We can get an idea for Basalt Creek, how much volume we need to store in order to detain and prevent erosion and flooding.
Other questions? Don't see any hands up. All right. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we're worried has schedule. That's crazy. Item number two is the 2021 City Council Advanced debrief.
Yeah, so I'll take this one and I'll walk through the presentation, but. I hope that you will chime in as you have comments or questions or just thoughts to share. Make sure that you can see this. All right. Sorry. Of course. Well, um, so let me see, how do I get to the next slide? Yes. So like other things, of course, we adjusted this year because of COVID and we went virtual. But it was still good as the the time together on January 29th and 30th, which I hope you will agree with that. So like I said, it was January 29th and 30th, so it was Friday and Saturday. We spent a total of a little over eight hours together. And we covered a lot of good things. So we started by celebrating some accomplishments from 2020. And as we talked about it, we realized that there were many accomplishments that that were. Available to be celebrated. Transportation improvements, the Twalton Moving Forward work that took place in 2020 was. Enormous. There was so much that that took place. You mentioned the community conversations about use of force and those happened, of course, in 2020 and. We celebrated the outcome of those. The Twalton 2040 Plan, we talked about being such great work. To kind of smaller things, but still celebrations. So the Jergens Dog Park Off Leash Area, the Vets Memorial Works, the Library Maker Space. Equity, diversity and inclusion work, and then certainly the response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Providing services in different ways, getting business assistance grants out the door quickly, the community psyche events and much more. Then we moved to talking about current and relevant issues in 2021. Excuse me, we talked about the COVID response. As that will continue in 2021, its long-term impact and how we can be resilient. Moving forward into this year and the and the coming years. Talked about transportation, of course, the Twalton Moving Forward Program, but also tolling. The shuttle down Borland and other issues associated with transportation. Talked about housing being a big issue in 2021, continuing the work that is currently happening. Want wanting housing that is available for all. Green, sustainable developments of housing. And some other things around the housing topic. We talked about parks and park development and. Funding for parks and the deferred maintenance that exists and how that is an issue for 2021. The comprehensive plan, so we talked about continuing the work that that has begun. And that's been on updating the comprehensive plan. And that's been just a huge effort and it will continue in 2021. Water, of course, is an issue in 2021. Our contract with Portland expires in 2026. And we're beginning the effort around that and that will be on your plate in this year. We talked about city facilities, whether that's the new city, the city building out on Herman Road. The Library Maker Space, city parks. And just making sure that we're on track for the the work that's happening around city facilities. Talked about social justice and economic inequities and continuing our DEI work and honoring the way that. The the work that we're doing and, you know, being trauma informed and. Thinking about environmental justice and zoning inequities. And finally, on the issues list, the Climate Action Plan and the the work that is coming forward and on that. So being remote allowed us to bring in a component that otherwise probably would not have happened and. I thought it was really exciting. We got Dan Klein, who is a professor at Stanford. To work with us on the key principles of improvisation mindset. And of course, that is, you'll remember as practicing, accepting offers, assumed value, making others look good, forming bonds with colleagues. Played, had several different exercises that were so interesting and informative that you'll remember the oh, good. Activity that talked about taking things and thinking about them, not 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 turning them away, accepting offers and. And thinking about them in a positive way, whatever came at you. Did several rounds of this shared fake memory? That helped us recognize some of the components around. Accepting offers and making others look good and and snowballing. As a concept. Did this whole round about that ended with yes and? So it started with just no, whatever, whatever the suggestion was with no. And then whatever the and then the next round was yes, but. And then it ended with yes, and and the impacts of the how that created energy and. And excitement and often new and creative ideas. And then the final activity we did was the alphabet recitation where it was more of a listening exercise and. Spending time listening to what and anticipating what others were going to do. Then we spent some time looking at the the council's 2030 vision statements, making sure that they're remaining relevant into the future. And then finally, we ended by talking about how we work together and how that building trust and open communications and being open to be shaped are so important. In this environment as we move forward with each other. So that encompasses all of the 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 work that went into those eight plus hours and. So that's the outcome of a the product of this work is. Vision statements and priorities and then just the remembrance of. The stuff that we worked on together. And before, so we have used a placemat, which I'm holding up, but let's see if you can. This has been our placemat and this was our most recent placemat. And the really, the reason for the placemat is to keep front and center for the council. What we have talked about. And so before finalizing this year's placemat. I wanted to make sure that we're all good with the components and the concepts, so. We've written, I've written out the updated vision statements based on your work. These are the revised ones as as I took from the notes. I'm going to read through them. And I know that you can read, but I I'm going to just read through them to give you an opportunity to just make sure that they capture. What you 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 intended and then I'll stop a pause and we can come back to them. So an inclusive community that promotes equity, diversity and access and creating a meaningful quality of life for everyone. A connected, informed and civically engaged community that embraces our city's diversity. A thriving and diversified economy that includes living wage jobs, increased tourism and sustained financial stability for the whole city. Safe, vibrant and accessible gathering places throughout the city that build and celebrate our whole community. An efficient, accessible, innovative, sustainable and connected transportation system. That effectively and safely meets the needs of our entire community. Safe, desirable, welcoming and sustainable neighborhoods with housing that is available for all. And finally, an environmentally active, sustainable, responsible and forward-thinking community that values and protects our natural resources. Inhabitants and habitats. So I'll just take a pause and ask if. That captures your sentiments and if that that can be taken now to. To a piece of artwork. I see Counselor Brooks' hand, but.
I can't see folks, so go ahead.
Okay, can I just speak up?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um. We had talked about. I forget the term we used, but it wasn't a good vision term. And after thinking about it for a day or two after the. Advance, I really felt that resilience was a term that I was looking for. Because I just think through the pandemic, through the environmental challenges. Through the storms. Through the fires, through the economy. And even through the. The even though it hasn't touched our community too much, some of the racial tension. Resilience was a term that I thought I thought that should be included somewhere, even if it was. In the list of environmentally active, sustainable. I don't know, but. Anyway, I just want to put that out there because I think it was something that touched on. The problem solving piece that we were looking at. I forget the term that we were talking about. And I just want to put it out there. To see if anyone else resonated with that.
So might I just jump in and so on the next slide, when we talked about priorities. Or I guess it's the next slide, under the crisis preparedness, adding in a resiliency plan. Based on that suggestion, Counselor Brooks.
Thank you very much. I missed that. Yeah, I like that. And I I like, I don't know if there's any way of adding it into the environmental place around. Active, sustainable, resilient. But I know that's a lot of list. We have a big list there, so. So that that next page probably covers it unless somebody else has a different thought.
We can't see hands or the mayor can't see hands.
I can see, I don't see any hands up. Well, Valerie's just went up.
Yeah, my turn is up. I guess. I I think I could leave this till next year, but the resiliency thing, I think maybe next year we could think about adding something about resiliency and preparedness, a kind of. I don't know if we need to add it now. We kind of rushed through the end and I think that could have been fleshed out better, but. I'm okay to leave it for this year because we have something on as a goal for the year. But just a thought for maybe next year's agenda.
Anyone else? I'm I'm fine the way it is right now, so.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and move forward and then then you we can, you can come back to it if you have other thoughts. So like I said, Jim is tasked with graphically showing how these are interrelated. Remember last at the at the advance, you talked about. On the current placemat, the vision statement is it has a circle around it, making it seem like that they're sequential perhaps. Or it could be that message. And so the the thought was to somehow graphically show that these are all interrelated and. Work together seamlessly. So so Jim will be responsible for coming up with something that graphically shows that. And so then the second part of the front of the placemat is the 2021 priorities. And so. Based on your work, of course, at at on in January. These are the seven that we came that you came up with and very much like. So that there's seven headings and then there's bullet points under each one. So. Housing that has a variety of bullet points, affordable, supportive services, diversity of housing, smart design and green construction. So that's kind of. One priority, transportation, another big one, to call it moving forward, the shuttle program, tolling and then other regional initiatives. Another big bucket of priority is diversity, equity, inclusion and social justice. So what's captured under there is community engagement, zoning inequities, cultural competency training, accessible communication. And environmental justice. Then under the environment, the Climate Action Plan will be a biggie. So it's just that's an enormous piece of work that you'll see on your work plan, on your agenda, work session coming up in, I believe, the next meeting. Community assets, so this is parks, the parks funding, deferred maintenance, water supply, city facilities. Economic development, so urban renewals on the table this year, certainly the comprehensive plan, development code and then business support. And finally, crisis preparedness, which includes a crisis management resiliency plan as we just discussed a minute ago. So again, before having Jim graphically illustrate these, I just wanted to make sure the words are are you're good with the words.
Birds' hands up.
Thanks. I was just wondering if under the environment, I know that we check in with the B city. And it's a progressive plan, so I was wondering if the the B city and the tree city, I don't know what the tree city. Plan is or how engaged that is, but I do know that the B city is constant work. And I was wondering if that could be reflected, excuse me. If that could be reflected under the environment as well. And the other thing that comes to mind when I look at community assets and I might be paring down a little bit too far, but. With the mural coming on and with all such positive work with the psyche grant in the arts. I don't know if we can include the arts and the community assets as well, since we. Have our projects coming online or being taken care of all the time.
I don't know what others think of that. I I'm fine to add those as bullet points. Acknowledging that there's a tremendous amount of work that is happening in the organization and the community and the city. That is not reflected in in these and both of those are are being worked on, whether or not they're on this list.
The B city one's just so new and. I'd love to hear an update and. And the arts have just been so well received and. We might do more traffic wrap boxes and things like that, so. That's why those come to mind. I'm happy to hear what other people think too.
Counselor Pratt.
I do like adding like the B city and. And the tree city because there are requirements to keep up those certifications. You know, even though maybe we don't personally do a lot, it's something we're overseeing and making sure and. And then I don't know if you said that, Bridget, but I think community assets are artwork. I guess it's part of the park system, but. That's becoming more and more a part of our community and it's awesome. So. And I have one last thing, and this is just my misunderstanding, but. I honestly don't know what cultural competency training means. It seems like a very professional term. I don't know. Does that mean cultural awareness? I'm just not sure how that's defined, so. It might be fine. I just don't know exactly what. How that's defined.
Counselor Brooks.
I'd like to comment on cultural competency because it's part of my profession and. I know that that term is a controversial term, actually, with people with lived experience oftentimes. It's a term that we use professionally often, but as far as public facing. It's not always the strongest term for people to understand what we're doing. And. I I don't know what to say, like. It takes a long time. For me, it took a master's degree and a lot of hours of practice to. Get a good start on cultural competency. But when even when I was doing the LIP committee work, it came up. With some of the directors of community organizations not liking that term and those directors happen to be people of color, so. There's controversy around that terminology today and. It's interesting that you pointed that out, Valerie, Counselor Pratt. So.
Well, I remember our conversation, well, if I remember our conversation correctly at the advance, it. This was directed at the organization doing DEI, continuing our organizational training effort around DEI. So perhaps we just say that is it can continued organizational training around DEI and social justice.
I think DEI training is a lot more acceptable to a lot of people.
So how are folks with, like, two or three people who are okay adding B city? And tree city to environment and possibly uh arts to community assets, just be arts in general. Counsel Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor. So if we're going to start adding groups, which is fine, should we add cert under crisis preparedness? And and I.
I like that idea.
And I think that um. Because I'm new, I probably don't have a full concept of how much work each of these categories is going to take. And it makes me a little nervous to continue to add bullet points. And so I'll be honest that that makes me a little nervous because of my unknown, so I'll leave it at that.
I'll pick up on that on. It's a good point, Counsel Hillier. It's not additional work because some of this is ongoing. I think it's just acknowledgement that it's a continued priority. Uh you know, cert already exists. We're not spinning it up, but we want to put it out there that cert is still a priority as is tree city, B B city. And uh arts in the community. So we're not adding to list. We're just, I think, emphasizing that it is a priority in twenty twenty one. Counsel Pratt.
I I wholeheartedly support adding cert to this list, especially after all they've done for us already this year.
Well, and so my my comment to that would be I find adding it to the list based on your direction. I the cert is a component of our crisis management efforts and endeavors. And it's a big, it's a big one and and it's an important piece of it, but it is one component of crisis preparedness and crisis management in that plan. Well, we can certainly call it out just to give it some visibility. All right, we ready to move to the next? All right, so um. That that is side one of so the vision statements and the priorities. So side two, I'm currently on side two, we have uh this council staff roles and expectations. And I could certainly get Jim to clean this up and make it um graphically show it a little bit differently. And um uh so it 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 stands out and is readable and legible. But the recommendation is that since we talked some about this, that that remain on the placemat on side two. Um another component of side two and is having Jim graphically illustrate this improv mindset. So this was just a really quick sketch, um and it's I I recognize that it's it's not readable, but the thought would be. To capture that in some way as a reminder for us to remember the oh, good and the yes and and make others look good and connect and listen. So um don't know what you think about that, but I'm. I'd love to hear your thoughts.
Uh Counsel Pratt and Counsel Brooks.
Oh, good. Yes, and I think this is a great idea to add.
Counsel Pratt stole mine. Oh, good. I thought it was. I thought it was fabulous, and I think grounding on this is just a really great idea. And I could find this very useful. I could find this as useful as the other, more useful, honestly. I think this was such a really great highlight of the, besides being with you all, all y'all. This was such a great highlight of the of the experience for me this year, so I'd love this. Thank you.
And then finally, um having Jim graphically represent the the conversation about ways we work, we can work together better. So the respect and value each other, the um being open to be shaped, um giving each other the benefit of the doubt, being patient, participating in small groups. And in standing meetings and creating a safe place to have comfortable comfortable conversations. So I'm not, I again, this was a quick sketch and um but the the thought of graphically illustrating that concept. On the placemat, I'm happy to hear your thoughts about that.
I'm not seeing any objections.
Right. I think that is the last. Yes, it is the last slide, so I shall stop share and um ask for any additional thoughts, feedback, comments. Before I give this to Jim and see what he comes up with.
Counsel Sacco.
I just want to say as a new counselor, um I didn't know that the city council and city participated in something like this. And I just thought it was it was hugely beneficial um for city council and city staff to come together and share in these conversations. And I found it very beneficial and just good to know that the city does something like this. I'm so glad um that we share in this forum as well. So thank you very much for um this experience.
All right. Counsel Pratt.
I just want to say, um yeah, those and I love having the placemat even though we're distance because it's right in front of you and it's really nice to have it there.
Anything else on this? Okay, well, thanks, Charlene. All right, and welcome, Counsel Reyes. Good to see you. All right, uh that brings us to the uh Council Media Agenda Review Communications and Roundtable. Tonight, we don't have any announcements or proclamations to make. Uh any questions on the consent agenda? All right, um with that, uh we'll go ahead and start our council communications round robin. And I'll start with, in order of the photos on my screen here, is Counsel Hillier.
Gosh, me again. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um greetings to everyone. So I not a whole lot has happened. I mistook the Counselor Brooks shared with us a color of uh the law. I'm sorry if I miss uh calling that, but I had it in the wrong time zone, so I'm getting waiting for the uh. Recording of that. So thank you, Counselor Brooks, for sharing that with us. I'm very interested to hear that. Um I can report that um Jerianne has gathered the group together to look at the um science scholarship. And um unfortunately, I filled my calendar before I got the meeting notice, but Counsel Grimes and I will communicate prior to that meeting on Thursday. And we should have something to report back to the group um after that. And let's see, um I shared earlier, I am I'm happy that that um the chipping. At least for the time of our council meeting slowed down because I live across the street from a park that's been a dump. Or not a dump, but a depository. It's not a dump at all. I'm sorry about that. Words matter, don't they?
Gathering place.
A depository for um so much of the um da- damaged branches. And boy, have they been chipping up a storm. I wake up to it in the morning and I'm surprised I don't go to sleep, so just to continue, thank you. And I would also like to share just to um there's a, as we talk a lot about trauma and resilience um as part of our core values. Twelton Together is hosting a trauma-informed approaches to mitigate trauma and build resilience lunch and learn this Wednesday. And if you're interested, you can find it um on their social media or on Eventbrite. It um will learn simple ways to buffer the impacts of stress for our youth uh through a trauma-informed lunch, so that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Sacco.
I don't have anything specific this week. Thank you.
All right. Counsel Pratt.
I'll take up Kristen's time or also. Um I went to two webinars, um one that the city put on environmental sustainability and the housing webinar. Both were very interesting and um the environmental sustainability one really hit me because it's um. I think of my grandparents and every they didn't waste anything and that's basically a good way to be environmentally conscious. So and then um the um council advisory committee on appointments, we um talked to um people applying for parks. And um the arts committees that um were waiting for a few people that didn't make the appointments. But um as usual, everybody was overly very enthusiastic and dedicated to serving our community. I went to the C four meeting and for Clackamas County, um they talked about their climate action plan. It's been delayed because of COVID. So they're hoping, I was really hoping it tied in with us and they were moving a little faster, but they're not. They're hoping to have it in place by twenty twenty three. The big topic was about um a vehicle um. I can't read my writing, but vehicle registration fee increases because Clackamas County has a lot less funding than as opposed to Washington County for um roads. And they've got more roads than any other county in the state, so they've got a real um issue with trying to develop those roads. So that was some fairly heated discussion of how to move forward and it's be moved forward to the next meeting. The thing I'd really like to um ask everybody tonight is if you would consider supporting um a a resolution affecting the Stafford area. Um I know you're all aware that there's a three-party agreement between Westland, Lake Oswego and Tuolatin. To um look at the Stafford area, to divide up areas of interest, which means what will. Go be annexed into our cities at some point in the future. And also um to together develop a plan of how this land will be used. And um a few months ago, I spoke at a hearing the um right at Athie Creek School, the Westland Wilsonville School District. They want to put um a storage unit there because where their current storage unit is, they want to put a school. This is right on the river. This is right next to um metro property that was bought with the promise to the owners. That this land would be kept for um just preserved riverland. So um I have um. To my two concerns, my ask is that um you um. Agreed to have a resolution just asking Clackamas County to put a moratorium on these conditional use permits. And the reasoning and also to um. Reach out to the other two cities to see if we could do a joint resolution. The reason for this is these can just my two major reasons for this are the conditional use permits. They're gonna um. I don't want to see this area piecemeal developed. I think something much better could be done in this area with the three cities working together. It's not going to happen tomorrow. It's going to happen over time, but I do think that um something better than piecemeal development can be done there. And the second reason is, of course, environmental. I mean, if nobody knows, like this particular piece of land, nobody knows which city it would be in. But if it was in Tuolatin, I would certainly hope that this would be part of included in the parks plan, which has been there for decades. To keep our riverfront properties preserved and protected from, you know, and keep it as part of parkland. So um I guess what I'm asking is any if anybody will support um a resolution or reaching out to the other cities to have a joint resolution. Just asking to put the county to put a moratorium on these conditional use permits.
Is it just on conditional use or any kind of development because?
Well, we can't any kind of development, but if we can, these these are typically conditional use permits and they're taking. Like this was um zone like farmland and they let them do this and it and I don't know if those pictures got forwarded to you, but there's just dunk all over that property. They're not good stewards of the land.
So I guess a question, I mean, I'm supportive. I got a question for Sean is. Not all the development that's out there to Clackamas County has say over is conditional use, correct? They have other kinds of land use decisions they can make in that area that might have impact on the three cities, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So I'd suggest, Counsel Pratt, you want to make it more general. I mean, if you're going to ask them.
Okay.
Go for the gusto swing for the fences.
Yeah, I mean.
Let's can you damper it down until the three cities get around to um looking at Stafford and the three-party IGA and AOIs. Because remember the warning from former Chair Bernard was that, you know, as long as it's legal. Right now, Clackamas County, you know, could approve anything anywhere from marijuana farms to more mega churches to stuff like this. So, you know, we'd ask them that they pause on it uh, you know, for a little bit until we, the three cities uh have some. Some time to look at and discuss the AOI, so I just advise your request to make it a little more general.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I just, I feel like the, what's the point of the three-party IGA if it's just, you know, gonna become this piecemeal development out there?
Right, and that 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 was the fear of Chair Bernard was as we waited, stuff like this, you know, occurs. So you, I got my hand up for it. So I saw, I think I saw Counsel Brooks hand up.
I have my thumb up.
Right. Okay, Counsel Sacco, okay, Counsel Hillier. So I guess I just asked Charlene. I'd ask Charlene to work with Sean to create some kind of resolution with, you know, basically asking Clackamas County. To um either better inform the city, well, basically that's Clackamas County not to move forward any applications. Not that it's going to stop them, but at least we're registering our uh frustration with development occurring in an area that. As Counsel Pratt says, probably could be better developed and better better planned and envisioned between the three cities.
I think a Counsel Caligan is highest and best use, and I don't feel that's what will happen.
Is that something you can put together, Charlene and Sean, just a general resolution, knowing that Clackamas County could ball it up and throw it in the garbage? But at least we're registering our our thoughts and ideally, maybe Lake Oswego and Westland will join with us.
Yeah, so that would be my question is um, do you want us to put something together and shop that around to Lake Oswego and Westland? Or that come to Tuolatin um first or or come it only from Tuolatin? Or like a try to make it a three-city joint.
Three-city because these are conversations, but that last land use application, Westland and Lake Oswego were unaware of the hearing. And had very much interest, so I have a feeling they have an interest in this. You know, they don't want to talk AOIs yet, but I think they're interested in this. So I'd make the ask of the other two cities that they want to sign on.
So let us work on something and but I think it will be also um elected official to elected official will be more effective. So you making the ask of the other cities. And we can we can craft something and I'll craft some, we craft something that that you can use to make that ask.
Okay, oh, good. Is that Counsel Pratt?
That's it.
All right, Counsel Brooks.
Thank you for Counsel Pratt, by the way. Um, well, first, um and I include you, Mayor, in this, but just want to say happy. Women's Month to the my colleagues here and happy International Women's Day. It happens to be today. I went to the PAB meeting on the twenty third and I'll give you a short list. Community Action um has an eviction court prevention program that was approved. And this is from the Community Development Block Grant Funding Cycles. There was a rural homelessness program in Forest Grove that was approved that they're similar to us with being sort of a service desert out there. Good Neighbor Center, Work to Housing and Saint Vincent de Paul, Saint Anthony's for rent and utility assistance, which people around here. I'm think are familiar with in Tiger. There were a couple more, but I can't remember how far down the list we approved, so that's a good start. And um I think there's a a PAB presentation coming up, so there'll be more information. I also attended the LIP meeting. Um we're getting down to carving up money, so that process is getting tighter and more concrete. We will also have a presentation from the Local Implementation Planning Committee for the Metro Housing Bond for Washington County coming up soon as well. And um so that can be illuminated there. Um, I want to do a more formalized announcement, but I do want to say thank you to, had a future Council of Anna Hennett chance. And I want to say thank you to Buck Braden for cheering the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee for many, many years. And. He's been a wonderful leader and is going on to a big um jurying of big arts. I don't remember what the term is, organization or show, but and so I think he's going to be wonderful with that. I don't remember what the term is, organization or show. And so I think he's going to be wonderful with that. And we had Janet step up and I'm spacing on her name right now, but I know it. And, and I'm just getting old, but she is going to be great. She has a lot of experience in the arts and also in community work. She was really involved when she lived in Lane County as well and has been involved here with the Historical Society. She is, Buck is a, like painting, flat medium. She is more of performing arts. So it has a different, she'll have a different perspective. And there are a lot of performing arts artists on the committee. So that'll be reflective too of some of the engagement and interests of people on the committee in our community. And then finally, I've been going to the National League of Cities Congressional Convention yesterday and today. It's part of the reason why I'm a little bit tired. They have us running from like 7:30 in the morning with no breaks all the way through. So these virtual things are as much of a jam as in person. I think less breaks, less food. But Dr. Fauci was there. There's a whole vaccine protocol thing. And then the biggest thing was the lift for the American Not Recovery Act, the American that, that just passed the Senate on Saturday and that will go to Congress now. So they feel really proud of that because a lot of money goes directly to cities. And there's an organized way that that happens. I have a lot of information. I'm sure that our city manager has a lot of it, but if there's any support, I do have a lot from the conference that I can share. And the National League of Cities did a lot of work advocating to keep that money in to go to cities, towns and villages. And all cities, towns and villages will receive money and if it, if it passes as it did in the Senate through Congress, which everyone's hopeful and encouraged that it will. And we should know. So by the time Hill Day happens, which is Wednesday, hopefully I'll just be saying thank you. And then the next thing they'll be working on is a lift around the economy. And Mayor Pete was there talking about the transportation. And so was Representative DeFazio. So that'll be just for, that'll be the things that are happening next. And I also learned about some grant opportunities that the city might be interested in. So I'll spread that information around. And, and I think that's about what I've got to report. Thanks.
Counsel Reyes.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a lot. We had our city council committee appointments, interviews. Like always, great people, like Valerie said. But no, no meetings, nothing to report. But thank you.
All right. I just got a handful of things because it was a short month. On the 25th, I attended the, you know, the mayor's, Metro Mayor's Consortium. We spent the whole meeting talking about five house bills and where the mayors felt they landed on these bills. They were primarily DEI bills, social justice bills and police reform bills. Quite a lively conversation. And MMC took some positions and wrote some memos and sent them to the key legislators that were in charge of these five bills. Greater Portland, they, Greater Portland has named a new CEO who is Monique Claiborne. Bridget's going to like this. Prior to living, she moved here in 2017 from Detroit. She was a Legislative Operations CFO for the City of Detroit through its bankruptcy. And before that, she was the Business Attraction Manager for the Detroit Regional Chamber. So this, Monique introduced herself at our Small Cities Consortium meeting. Very well qualified, very excited to move the organization forward and look forward to working with her. And the last part of that GPI meeting was the SEDS, again, another fun acronym for Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Remember, we're required to have this by the US Commerce Department. And it's a regional wide plan on how the region will develop in the next few years. I have another subcommittee meeting on Thursday. I'm moving this forward. An exciting call was with Representative McLean on the 26th. She's a key player on transportation in Oregon. Things we discussed were I-5, I'm sorry, 205 tolling, or really tolling in general, the Boone Bridge, the creation of a Lamont Locks Commission and I-205 in Abernathy. She is super, super zoned in on transportation. She knows her stuff, pretty impressed. She is pretty well an advocate for tolling in some form because that's the only way she envisions a lot of the transportation projects getting paid for in the metro area. But she's also open to tolling outside of just the 205 area. She foresees that as basically the test case, but it will be expanded through the whole metro region. Basically, foreseeing from the Boone Bridge up to the Columbia Crossing and all of 205. But there's significant impediments, if you will, and one of them being is the state's not ready for the projects, which I found very interesting that she said if somehow magically Pete DeFazio had those multimillion dollars and said, here you go, here's a check, start winding 205, ODOT has no capacity to do it right now. There's, there's no plan. There's no nothing. So they could get the money, but there's no plan for it and how to get the project done, which would have to be done first. So we could get the money, it could sit for a while. So one of their priorities is to get those plans in place, get those steps they need to follow when that money does come. Because they envision there will be significant infrastructure dollars coming from Washington that they need to be able to act upon it and move forward. And I think that's it for me. Counsel Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so sorry. I, I've been, I'm sure probably all of you have been in contact with many senior citizens and different people in the community who are desperately trying to get vaccines. And for anyone listening tonight, I just want to encourage you, I know many don't have computers. And so calling 211 and being able to get on a list, I, I've heard people say they've had a long wait. But I would just encourage you to really just try it different times of the day, reach out to me. You can email me and I'll try to help you. But also if you do have access to a computer, please go to getvaccinated.organ.gov. And you can, and you can get through. I know things are moving forward quickly, but this is, this is a great time. And I know we have so many seniors in our community. So I forgot to say that. Thank you.
That's a great point, especially with the, I think the priority, like you're saying right now, Counsel Hillier, is to get the seniors through because end of March, the windows open drastically with 45-year-olds plus with existing conditions, pre-existing conditions. So that's going to be a lot of people. So priorities to get our seniors, you know, 65-plus, 60-plus vaccinated now, getting through the system. Because it's going to get a wallop in April. So good point, Counsel Hillier. And one of the things to stay, you know, I've been hearing is, you know, if your grandparents or your elderly uncles, aunts can't handle it, you know, get, you know, you can do it for them. Most of these agencies are more than happy to have someone younger, even as young as, you know, your kid. You know, their, their grandkid, you know, work their magic on the phone, on the computer, have them keep dialing 211 to get through. Because they are aware it's very frustrating for the elderly who don't have computers, who can't see a screen, who don't have a cell phone. So it's one of these community efforts that if you have a neighbor, help them out. If you know they're, they're frustrated with trying to get registered. I heard one of my neighbors finally got through and she was a super happy person, but it took her about a week. So, all right. So with that, we, wow, we got like a half hour. This is very rare. So let's go ahead and take a half hour break and we'll be back at seven o'clock for a regular city council meeting. We'll see you soon.